Okay, we're gonna come out of recess. We were waiting for the camera to be set up. It is. Now, we just came out of a non-public. Now, we're going in. We're in a public session now. So, we're gonna continue with a regular town meeting. A regular Dunbarton Board of Selecting meeting for April...October?
You're talking this stuff.
It's October 12th.
Two beverages there.
Seventy-eight. Yesterday.
Seven oh eight.
Seven oh eight. Thank you. All members of the Board of Selectmen are present. Town Administrator is present. Secretary is present. Leo Montalvo is recording for the benefit of the voters. Okay. First thing on business, we have minutes. We've got two sets of minutes.
I'll make a...
Excuse me.
I'll make a motion to approve the October 5th, 2017 minutes as amended.
Any discussion?
No. But there's a few changes that would have to be made.
Okay. Did you see the changes I made?
Seven oh eight.
Yes, need seconds.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, we have a second set of minutes for the non-public session.
I have a question.
Sure.
Could there be a draft or because that's gonna be reconvened?
That is correct. So, we haven't really come...we haven't actually finished it.
No.
There are always stamp drafts, aren't there? But instead of voting on...
Oh, right.
Don't vote on it.
Don't vote on it.
And the non-public was not amended, correct? It was...
There was one line.
There was one line.
There is one line, okay. I think I missed that.
Should be near the bottom.
Is that a discussion? I think the quick block, that's the actual...
Because they're reconvened and so that's gonna be the actual minutes for the...
Okay. Table that. Table that completely. Okay. As we would do with another issue we brought up for reconvening and discussion. Okay, we're good. Thank you. Point of order, bringing it up. Okay. Yeah. Public comment, we're gonna open it up. This is a time where members of the public can state their concerns. I'm gonna start with Leo.
What's that?
That's it?
I thought you'd never ask.
State your name for the record, sir.
Don Larson, Birdsview Drive, Dunbarton. A couple of things. I was at the New Hampshire Cemetery Association meeting yesterday and they were giving away in a raffle a flagpole. And I got to thinking, we don't have a flagpole in any of our cemeteries. And then I've talked to a couple of the people there and they said that you can get grants from the moose plates that would probably pay for it, but we have to make our cemeteries historical landmarks, which I don't think we'll have a problem with that, but it's just the paperwork. But we might be able to do that in order to get the grants from the moose plates to put a flagpole in, a lit flagpole, so we don't have to go out and raise a flag every day. And that's so we can have it illuminated. And that weather would be with solar or with electric. This one out here, we could probably do electric. Page's corner, I don't know if there's electricity there or not, but it's just a thought, you know, for a project or town committee or somebody who wants to make a donation, why, we can do it that way also. But that's just a couple of...
Do the cemetery trustees discuss it yet?
Well, we haven't, yeah.
Okay. I'd say that'd be the first step.
Yeah, that'd be the first stop, to make the cemeteries historical landmarks. Because that'll open up a lot of grants for us and take care, you know, do something along those lines.
I would think solar would have to work because it just sent us a nosebleed, not digging in.
Well, the other one too is, we'll have to have money in our budget for the electric.
No, I just...
We're gonna plug it in at your house.
I actually saw it.
You're gonna have a lot of coal, dude.
And it goes on top. It's pretty awesome. Okay. So, note on that, but I would say first step is to shove it back towards the cemetery trustees for discussion to see what their recommendation is of board.
Yeah. But I want to discuss it in our November meeting.
Exactly.
Were you talking about one of each of the cemeteries in town or...
All three.
All three.
Because we got veterans in all of them. Stark is a private cemetery, so we won't have anything to do with that. That's already in the historical society, so, you know, if they want a flagpole, they can get their...
Good suggestion though. But to open up for grants is always good.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Your agenda next, sir? Any public comment? Okay. And sir, public comment?
Well, I just came to kind of view and as a new resident, kind of get into what goes on in the town. My two cents on the flagpole would be that a few years ago, I looked into a flagpole and the cheapest, easiest thing, very simple, is a solar powered, clamps on, aims up, and it's a hundred dollars or something. Very doable, easy, just no wire.
They actually have now, where they sit on top of the flagpole, where the golden ball would be, and just a small section like that, and it goes down too, right on the flag. So, there are various options for solar. So, I think that'd be something we're considering discussing. Okay?
Top-down would probably be better for half-staff.
Yeah. Just for the record, just so you know, when we do public comment, we state the name and address just because it's being recorded.
Oh, okay. Roger Rice, 330 Stark Highway North.
Okay, I think it helps with that.
Can I just ask a question on that? Hey, Don, how will that work with not being able to dig in the cemetery? How will that work to put a pole in the cemetery when you can't dig?
I don't know. We have it, you know, when we pay for it, we just have them install it. We just have to figure out where. You'd probably want it in the center as much as possible and access by the road.
Don, there's an RSA where you can't dig within the cemetery unless it's to, I think, bury somebody.
Yeah.
Okay, well...
That's the approval of the trustees.
Yeah. Well, it's work in progress.
I gotta remember that for the back.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna close public comment. And Lou, come on up. We understand you had a great season this year.
With this. A lot of people down there.
But as far as milfoil too, I mean, milfoil was kept at bay, I understand.
And we've been...
Yeah.
The season was good. We had a lot of milfoil last year because we had the drought last year. What happened, the water went down, sun hit the plants before they should have, plants sprouted and all hell broke loose. So, Taco DES, they're here across the state, a lot of different places, they really were in the hit, the lakes and ponds. What we had was a grain law coming in. That was a lot of the money that spent. But they did, they come in, on July 10th, and they were asking for like $25,000 to do the grain law. And the grain law came in from a company that did it. And what they did, they used 110 50-pound bags of the grain law, all near the shore. And I'll show you the difference of what happened. They did a good job. This is the map we have from DES. I only got 10 copies of that map. All these circles and dots, that's where they found milfoil before they did anything. Then what we had to do, we had also, on our world article, have money ready for divers. Divers had to come in. This is what they had, about four spots. So, the grain law took care of 99% of it and this was taken care of two months later.
You stayed there? Those bags, you said 110?
110.
150-pound bags. 50-pound bags. Okay, thank you.
So, they were bringing a lot of it. It's not done like that. And everything's gonna be done. Paperwork's going through as the process. It's a long process to get it through. We've got a couple of forms coming up. This is the big one.
Yeah, to re-submit for grants.
Yes. You have to sign off, pay attention to rules and everything.
Now, last year, you attempted to resurface, are you gonna resurface a potential warrant so you can have non-relapsing funds?
We're gonna try to do something like that.
I know, it was last year we had some challenges with that.
It was discussion at the town meeting.
Right.
Because, you know, if we don't use it off, then we can't install this shit. What happened was, this is a good idea. It was the total cost for the herbicide was $25,406. They only spent $22,225, $13,000. For the divers, it was $6,552. They only spent $300. They only did two hours and 15 minutes. So, there's a lot of money coming back to the town right now, I think, to DES.
There's pros and cons, you know. Voters like to see good results. And I think as taxpayers, we'd like to see money come back to them if it's not being utilized.
Yep.
And I will say, you know, it's been a long road to get to that point because when they first asked for that money, they didn't think it was gonna be a yearly thing and it ended up becoming a yearly thing. I was at that first meeting and they didn't think they would have to do it, but it kept growing and growing and growing.
Yeah.
How many years now, Lou, have they come back to...
Six years. I'm in the chair of the milfoil research committee since 2012.
So, we've been treating it about six years.
Yes. Five years and everything. But back then, there was parts of the pond you couldn't get kayak for, you couldn't fish in there. You know, I saw parents telling their kids on tow lines and kids fall in. I don't see the heads coming up too quick to find their way to the milfoil. That's why I said we gotta do something. That's why I came up to talk to the selectmen. Everything's done. We checked the other pool pond, just let you know, the other pool pond is done, we have two vehicles, that's what they do every year, they check the other pool. Timber, log, stock and cargo truck, no milfoil in there.
That's good news.
Yes, we did them clean all along. We get a lot of people down there and just some ideas. This year, we did 519 inspections down there. And last year, we did more, pretty less. The other thing is, we made the hours we had to get, we did 220 hours of volunteers down there in Pay Lake Coast. We had Pay Lake Coast last year, but she only worked like seven days because she was in college and she didn't go back early and all that. We had a lot of money from the previous year. They used the previous numbers, she didn't give us a grant, New Hampshire Lakes. So, basically, a lot of that went back to New Hampshire Lakes. This year, we're gonna do it for two people. She's only there half the time, and second person will still use up the same grant. What happens when they come in, these are college kids, we put them out there, they work all day, same and all day funding. She asks me why I did it. And they make some cash for their pockets. It comes from the Hampshire Lakes basin, the work we did the previous year. By having the two people, having more coverage, what that does is gives the volunteers time to relax. The volunteers start in the middle of May, the college kids don't come in until June or July, and they leave somewhere in August, go back to school. Volunteers then go back on to work. So, we're up there in the weekends from mid-May to mid-September. And we did pretty good. You know, we got a lot of people. A lot of people complimented and conditioned the pond. A lot of people are from Dunbarton. Because we have to ask, where is the boat last? It's farm pond. I go, where are you from? Oh, Snook Road or wherever. They name it off different roads in Dunbarton.
Did the inspections actually find milfoil on any of the boats coming in?
No, we cleaned. And we checked every single boat, trailer and truck.
Do I think he was asked, did you find any boats coming into the pond?
No. Education's out there now. People, we show people we're looking on the trail, it's full of milfoil, like behind the license plate. You know, they pull the truck out, they could attach themselves behind the license plate. So, we're educating people, New Hampshire Lakes is giving us pamphlets to hand out. Everyone thinks every green thing in the pond is milfoil, but it's not. We have, you know, we put the herbicide in and I saw stuff getting requests. They have milfoil, they have milfoil, they have milfoil. Take them down and look at them, no. It's been a lot of like this one. High things that look like milfoil, you have to look really close. And Amy came down, she looked at them and she said, no. None of those are milfoil. So, we're doing good. We get the volunteers, I'm working with the seven, I'm getting other Pay Lake Coasts. And that'll give us a little more flexibility there. Because she only worked like seven days. Last year, she worked 11 days, which was really two more weekends. So, we're gonna try to do that. And we got a lot of things going with the public, you know, handing them out, showing a lot of people, like you said, they have been working same. But, you know, you just gotta keep up on it. I don't think, Amy has to come up one more time, the four or five little circles on there, the divers one that you got in two hours. She has to come down, look at that. And then she'll say, okay, four or five has nothing or a little bit or a lot or whatever.
Amy's gonna be...
Yes.
You got two.
I've worked with her and she's unbelievably great.
Okay. So, Lou, is there gonna be anything required from the town this year to maintain it?
It depends what Amy says. She's the one that makes the call. I don't make the calls. And that, all's I do is, she says, yeah, we have divers down there for four days, I make sure the divers go there four days. And if there's some herbicide or liquid or whatever, I make sure they do it. I've worked with the different companies who do it. I know Pete Bessler and I finally met him, talked on the phone, I emailed, so I know he is in a few years.
So, her inspection is the driver behind this all?
Yes. She's gonna come back and say, yes, yeah, I get a little bit or a lot. She may turn around and say, we just need divers next year.
Okay.
A couple hundred dollars, a couple thousand dollars, I don't know. That's what she's gonna come back and say. And what's gonna happen then, just to let you know the rest of the process, she's gonna come back and with a packet, with a couple of forms in there and some information. One of them is, you know, here are the, she had a list of, let's say, five divers, five diver companies. And they'll come back into the hub and wrap like that, where she found the milfoil, where she sees it. And they'll say, okay, let's say four days or six days or eight days. And she'll say, okay, can you get it done in eight days? Worst case scenario. Like, this time it was eight days, you know, we needed two hours. So, that money's gone back. And, you know, when she gets that, then I have to contact all five vendors with the map or email that says, okay, here's the report on pond, Amy needs the results back by whatever date she selects.
Right.
Then she puts it all together, then she goes back and she has a part of money, she splits it up. We got a 30% match the last few years, which is good. So, we do have some money coming back. I think the lake's gonna be very clean. Maybe a little spot here, a spot there, we don't know.
Well, certainly good news. Yep.
Can I ask one quick? You keep mentioning Amy, because you know what her last name is? Smagula.
Des.
Des. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we look forward to hopefully not having a big request.
Yeah, I don't think, I really, personally, you know, my opinion, I don't think you don't give, because all the herbicide they put in there, we had to wait after they put the herbicide in, you have to wait for the pH level to come up. It took a little longer to get really well after it.
Even if we don't apply for a grant, I think at the town meeting, it'd be nice to have a status report presented. We can put in the town report, of course, but it might be worthwhile just because, you know, voters have been paying for it and you have both sides, one side saying, yeah, do it, one side saying, I don't know, then the other side saying, oh, we're not gonna pay a dime for it.
Yeah.
But it'd be nice to say, it's a good news story what you're bringing.
Yeah, they do submit a report.
Okay.
Page, like, put a letter together, go, we'll give them a report.
Well, the thing is, I don't anticipate doing zero, because then if Kyra just come back, so I would look good with optimism to what she reports.
Yeah, because when I saw that map and, yes, we had eight days of diver for $6,000. I was talking with the diver crew that's went through the diving, I said, we're gonna be out of there in a couple of hours. And they looked at it and they went through, just what she told them to do. There was one person, they put the docks in and he found some green stuff underneath, he found some milfoil, they got panicky after, they did the herbicide, called Amy, Amy came down and she did, I think, I gave her directions right through his dock. She went right over there and she went underneath, and then she dug up, I saw milfoil.
Great.
Just kind of pound everyone down.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you. Thank you for the report.
We're in good shape.
Do you need your picture of that? Yeah.
I have, I have...
Okay, great. Well, Lou, thank you for coming in and sharing the good news.
Yes.
And we look forward to seeing any paperwork that has to be generated for this next year.
It's, you're gonna see another couple of those.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll be okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Bye now.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is a tax rate setting update, and I understand it's good news and bad news.
What's the good news?
Well, the good news is that I looked at what the municipal tax rate was. We went down approximately six cents. That was the good news. This is the management by the selectmen. Go ahead, Lou, I'm sorry, Lou, we have one more thing.
Can I have one?
Go ahead, please, before we get done with the dirty news.
I'm getting old. As we all are. And it's for me, it might be a hundred mile shift. It's a hundred mile drive for me, $15,000 off, $15,000 back. I'm chair of the milfoil research committee in New York. And 2018 is the end of my term. I can't see myself going to 2018. We can work it out, where I can take care of this part of it, doing all the paperwork, but somebody else is gonna have to schedule the people down the ramp. I'll do timing the ramp, but I'm doing trips a day, every Saturday and Sunday from mid-June, mid-May to mid-September. I'm tired.
Now, you're a chair, you have a board that you're gonna speak to about this?
We have a board, but never even went to the meetings. I was driving up here like every Tuesday. Finally, a place had a meeting, you never show up. You know, and this is way back when we started, so I said, get them, get the meetings, we just wanna take care of it.
Right.
And the other thing is, I don't mind doing, like you said, doing this part of it, because you miss a date, you could go one or less, or it could be disqualified.
Has there been a backup person for you or have you been, it's really helped out?
There's really nothing to do, you know, nothing, you know, like this stuff, it's a one-person job. You can't have two people doing it, because if I think the other guy's doing something and he doesn't do it, he thinks I'm doing it, it could be out. It could be a little problem down there. But this, I can do it. This is all me and us. It's repetitive. Every Saturday and every Sunday, I'm down there doing $2, $4, $5 or whatever. I'm tired. So, yes, get down to back in 2018, no problem.
Okay.
And after that, you know, we can discuss it.
Keep your guys up, keep your eyes out for a good person that might fit in.
I ask all the time, we need more people to stitch up the votes. We get more new people moving in down there, we had an association meeting, we were talking, they wanna get involved.
There's a guy right behind you there.
No. No, it's, it's, we're too honest. It's not bad. But I just wanted, I'd like to know about it now, if it surprises you at the end of the year. Okay?
Okay. No, no, no.
Thank you, Lou. Good job, as usual.
Thank you.
All right, what page did you start on?
Page one of four, very top line, municipal. We have 2017 tax rate of $4.63, and then we have ours last year's of $4.69. That's a decrease.
Of six cents.
So, that's the board in action.
County went up?
County went up. Local education went up. State education went down a few cents. And, but you see, the big bogey in the room is basically that the local education bill went up. And that's gonna impact negatively the town, basically an increase of $1.63 approximately over to 2016. And now, with that, what our auditors did the last time and all that, we have a, we're at a crossroads here almost, because right now, we have a, the DRA recommends we have about 5% for contingency operations, a reserve built into our budget, or in this case, about $449,000 and change. The town now has about $460,000 if the DRA follows their rules. But what they don't, the area doesn't really recognize, we have non-relapsing money put into funds for a certain warrants that the town has passed. And so, in reality, we only have $268,000 this year of unassigned fund balance. Now, I understand other boards in the past have attempted to lower the tax rate by taking anything surplus and putting it, applying it to a tax rate.
Well, no, they didn't take anything like they took $100,000.
Right, but the thing is, when they take money away from that, we're left in predicament where we started this year with only $26,000 in reserve. And that puts a town at serious risk. So, right now, we're on a glide path of building up our recommended reserve of 5%, and we're about maybe 3% there if we get $260,000. We're not there yet. And so, I'm a little, I wanna be judicious in any type of lowering of the taxes more than what we already have done for the taxpayers, but we don't, I don't think it's responsible to put the town at risk by having such a small reserve. And I was just asking the rhetorical question today of lean. I said, what would happen if we, say, defaulted, we didn't have enough money to pay our bills? It'd be drastic actions. Library closed on somebody a certain hours of the day. Transfer station, maybe one day a week. Less police officers. And all those things would have to be severely cut to basically save money and freeze all spending until we could pay our bills. And so, that's the trouble with not having adequate reserve. And what would jeopardize, someone decided, I'm not gonna pay taxes. We didn't have enough defaults, some people not paying taxes, and we're tapping our reserves just to make payroll. Am I correct here? And so, that's the risk that, why the DRA recommends we have 5%.
When's the last time you've had to go into that fund?
Not in my time here, and it's not, it's not normal. And when I first started out, I think that our reserve was in that range of a half a million dollars. But in the last, like, 10 years, there were reasons by the board to use some of that. So, I gave you the example, if you took $100,000...
I was at those meetings where they used $100,000 for coffee.
Right. Then that would reduce the total impact of the taxes by 30 cents, $100,000.
And I think of the time, it may have been a prudent decision at the time, because remember, the economy was really bad. But Bob brought up another point the other day, it's like, we've had certain towns in our area which have had municipal buildings burned down, I mean, public works buildings burned down. And then you're, then you're stuck. Bobby, could you help me out here? Until it's, I think it's, I think, I think we're doing a good job by building the reserves up, but we're not there yet.
No, I think it's a good job for you to build them up. And again, my thought is, you know, this went up substantially more than I thought it was gonna go up this year.
Well, it was at 20, just under 27, and now we're, by auditor's calculations, we're at 268 and change.
And I thought it was gonna take more years to get up to that dollar amount.
Yeah.
So, by coming up that much in one year, I'm not saying that we should, you know, put $100,000 towards taxes, but I think that, you know, and it may not be something that's even appropriate this year, but maybe next year, if it comes up again and we can see a trend in this, we can, you know, maybe apply something towards taxes. I think it's nice to give a little bit, something back.
But at the same time, I think we have two major issues on the table right now. We have the bridge, which may have exceeded, may have to ask voters for extra money to pay for the bridge. And we may have just the buildings which have been in neglect for all these years. We know that the library's gonna be upwards of many thousands of dollars still paying. So, the thing is, we may give it back, but we're gonna end up taking it or asking for it again in warrants. And so, we gotta be careful here.
Unfortunately, with the bridge, it's not, you know, whether it's bad timing or poor judgment, the person has a budget, he's gonna create. A road may have to wait to get the bridge in. You know, you're getting $80,000, you know, I mean, and it was brought up a couple of times, we're getting $82,000 or something, $83,000 from the state as new money.
Right.
In addition to the unanticipated revenues, that's completely dedicated to road or bridges.
Yep.
And so, we were hoping to use that kinda to offset, you know, the public works department. So, I think within the confines of that budget, that money has to be filed for the bridge without going to the taxpayer and ask for a special warrant article. That's, that's the position I would take anyways. Because if I was a resident paying those taxes and seeing a separate warrant article for a bridge that we paid for twice and not got anything from it yet, it's kinda hard to look at it. it's kinda hard to look at a separate warrant article when you could do it right out of his budget.
It's gonna have to happen. So, when we go into the budget cycle, it's gonna be some, I don't think we have to do a quick reaction or do any action on that, but it's nice to see that it's a positive, then you see a.
I'm very glad, glad to see it come up that fast.
Right.
I thought it would take 10 years to get to $100,000.
You and I both, you know, what happened with one of the communities, if you remember, they lost their public works building and their equipment. They were fortunate that a contractor loaned them the equipment they could use, till their insurance settled with them, which took a while to do their investigation, you know, because you have the fire marshal that comes in and looks and decides what could have or did or didn't go wrong. So, we'd be in a bad spot, you know, and especially where, we're considered a town that pays their bill right up. So, I mean, for some reason, other agencies don't look at you kindly when you can pay your own freight, you know.
So, the only thing, I, I'm fearful for the, for our community, because we have, the state, the education went up, and then next year, there's gonna be a major proposal for a bond on the school, which is gonna be for some interesting discussion.
Okay, so basically, the reason for presenting this to you tonight is if there is no action on using any unassigned fund balance, then I will release this information that works and coincides with all the other data that I've submitted to the state for acceptance. And then, that allows this office to generate the warrant, print the tax bills. The warrant is signed by the board of assessors, and then we'll be able to get those out. They have to be out by November 1st at the latest, because you have to notify the taxpayer 30 days to pay the tax bill. So, by getting it out a little bit earlier, it'll give additional time for taxpayers to prepare for the tax. We'll still have it due December 1st, but they'll have five weeks or five and a half weeks to pay, depending on when we get it out of mail.
So, I guess the question on the table is, do we do anything with the unassigned fund balance? That's the question.
That's correct, yeah.
This is done here?
Yes, it's a 268K.
But I've never seen them touch that unassigned fund balance until they're at the end of the year, don't they?
This is the end of the year. This is when they.
I thought it was much later that they did that.
We've gotten a lot more efficient in prompt and in setting our, there are towns that aren't, don't set their tax rate as early as we do, and they end up sending the tax bill due the middle of December or the end of December. And the problem with that is, you should ultimately get your tax bill to the taxpayer 30 days before July 1st and December 1st, because as soon as, as long, the more time it takes for you to get your bills in, you're utilizing your unassigned fund balance to pay the bills that still have to be paid before the end of the year.
At this point, I have no issue, I have no issues with this. That's my feeling at this point. General?
Yeah, I actually think we should be somewhere, you know, I know that we're trying to hit a goal, and I think this year, at least that satisfies a good part of it. You know, and next year, you can take a look at what comes in, and you may divide it up if you want. But, I mean, you're going from, you didn't even have enough money to paint one side of a library building, you know, I mean.
Can I just state what the difference is in the rate for the public knowledge?
Yes, yeah.
2017 tax rate, municipal, has gone down six cents, $4.63. The county went up $3, to $2.34, which is a 24 cent increase. The school, local school, went up to $15.59, which is a $1.49 increase over last year. And then, the state education went down four cents to $2.35. So, the total, the new tax rate for 2017 is $25.61, which is an overall increase of $1.69.
Lean?
Yeah.
Since there's only three people here from the public, could we do them a copy of this?
Absolutely. You only need the front copy, it gives a breakdown. I will be posting it on the website, but would you like a copy?
If you guys want to take any small amount from that and put it back towards taxes this year, or you wanna leave it all in the fund for now?
Well, they did a pretty good job of draining the fund.
Yep.
We need to be somewhere, and I, you know, this is, this hasn't got any attachments to it, such as the fire truck, so you can't even consider that other money, although it looks good on paper.
Yeah, the top number does have a little attachment.
Right, it looks good on paper. So, I, I think I'd leave it the way it is. And, you know, next year, when we get the unanticipated revenue coming in, then we could look at kinda dividing it up. If anything, it may help. It doesn't do today any good to reduce taxes next year, but you might be able to do something in that, you know, that's not a circumstance.
And it came up so much this year, if we get another deal like this year, I think we will have a pretty.
Better understanding.
Might only, if they're like about 20 or 30,000 extra, then you realize it has a fluke.
Do you know how, you know how we, this number comes about, Dave? Do you understand how we get there?
Yeah.
There's the lapsing of any budget.
Yep.
And then, there's you budget conservatively for your revenues, and then your revenues come in above your budgeted.
Yeah, things I should just overlook every time, you know, or a new landing just changes.
Yeah, and then warrants, yeah, warrants that don't get totally expended, like the milk oil.
Comes back to us.
Those things would increase the surplus. So, there's a lot of moving pieces that help increase that number.
Okay, I think we have a consensus then?
Okay, so.
All right, education went up again. Hey, I'm gonna, if you got any comments, I'm gonna open up the public for a comment if you wanna, I'm interested in comments.
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, so what you're saying here is, if you took $100,000 out of the.
Unassigned fund, yeah.
That would lower it by 33 cents.
Correct.
So, that's a big number, $100,000.
Right.
So, you're talking about maybe taking some money. So, if you just took $50,000, you're only down 16 and a half cents.
Right.
It's like, doesn't make sense to jeopardize this for that little bit of money, and just leave it right there. That's my attitude.
You're basically agreeing with the board.
Yeah, that's my attitude, is like, why would you do that for, it's not even gonna show on your taxes, really, you know?
The only reason you would do it at all, you know, is on a hard year of taxes, you offer something back to the taxpayers.
Well, yeah, I understand that, but when you're already in a hole, where we are, okay, then why don't we just get ourselves out of a hole first as fast as we can? Because again, this is not, it's gonna be like pennies, you're gonna be saving if you try to do $50,000 or $40,000. It doesn't make sense, you know?
I think in the past, where everyone was hurting and the economy was really bad and was hurting, maybe it made sense back then, but now it doesn't.
Right, but again, to take, you know, even when you took $100,000 off before, that dug a hole as we went. It doesn't make sense to do that, you know?
It was not to fill that hole, no.
Yeah, right, so once, once we have that, you know, taken care of, then you can start saying, okay, well, we can put so much of this towards lowering your tax rate, you know? Because at least you have that behind us, so that way, if something does happen, heaven forbid, right?
Right.
You're covered, you know, but that's the whole idea, same at your home, you know? You wanna have a little money in the back in case your truck breaks down, so you can go to work tomorrow, you know? It's the same thing, really, you know?
Thank you, Leo. Anyone else?
No. In support of what was done in the past, the second time the money was taken out, at least it was done before the budget was formatted. The first time, it was done without the budget, where the budget had been formatted, and it was taken out at town meeting. And what happened was, all the different departments came in here, and everybody started to cut away at what they had to provide for the town, which was kinda sad to see it done that way, you know? So, I would say that the second time, they used, they might have been concerned with the citizen. I don't think they knew what the initial impact was gonna be, till the auditor did the books, you know, to find out the town's only got $26,000 if something tragic happens. You'd end up telling the fire chief, his truck now is the public works building, or whatever.
Yeah, I think that, and it could happen again, if somebody votes it in at town meeting, you know?
Oh, yeah, anything's possible.
But it won't happen on our end.
No, we're gonna be responsible. All right, okay, I'm gonna move on. I think we got a consensus here.
Do we have to make a motion to that tax rate?
I don't know that they have in the past. It wouldn't do any harm if you did. I think there was more involved with.
I think we should make a motion to set that tax rate, don't you, so that way.
Yeah, okay. I make a motion that we set the tax rate at $25.61 in order to publish the appropriate warrant for tax correction.
And if they, if they come back with a correction, are they gonna make up the difference?
No. No.
I think they're good.
I need a second, General.
That's 25.61 per thousand, isn't it correct?
A second, a second.
I was gonna do that, but I had to.
Any further discussion, General?
No.
Here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Lean, go forth and go through things.
Okay. The last part of that motion was to set the tax rate, and then you said something right at the end, I would be pissed.
So, she may prepare the warrant to publish it, correct?
That's okay.
She's gonna prepare the warrant.
I release this back to the DRA, that you've accepted it, and then the warrant process goes on.
Unless they reduce it.
That would be nice, but.
Then we'll amend the motion.
Yeah, okay. All right, let's move on. We're gonna go right to the inbox. Corinne, are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. It's a, it's an FYI only, but we have Chris Verminard. He's graduating from American Military University, which is a subsidiary of American Public University. He's got a great GPA, he's done well. He's getting a graduate with a master of arts in criminal justice. And I understand that the town provides some tuition assistance for upgrading his skill set. That's just an FYI. All right, we have another, a second request. This is something we talked about, elected not to do anything. The Department of Commerce and Statistics Bureau, the Census Bureau, they want us to basically do about 21 hours of work for them to update addresses. And they're not providing any funding, and it's got work done by a staff key of one of our employees to do, approximately 21 hours. Not including training that has to be done for this. The last, the last time this was brought up, we elected not to do it, because it's voluntary, it's not required. And it just makes their federal job a little bit easier, but you can read that.
When was it brought up last week?
Uh, maybe five months.
I think I get a letter from them probably every two to three months, so there's a lot of federal money in mailing to try to get the communities to complete the survey. But what's involved with the survey is training, plus 21 hours of, according to their calculations, to complete the work.
I feel.
I think it's a simple, right?
It does, it's not, definitely not a requirement.
I think this is amended by the federal government.
You have to keep on. You have to keep reading.
Yeah, in fact, let me pull another document, I'll show you a synopsis of what it's about.
Because I did take the, pick up the phone and call and speak to someone, and they did confirm that this was not a mandatory thing, and that they would update our records, that we wouldn't be completing the survey, but these continue to come in the mail, so it's.
Or did it say that we didn't have to do it? Maybe on this one. I don't think it said it on this one.
I love my name here. Did I see that? Did you see it anywhere?
None in that letter.
I think it's on the other.
I didn't see it on that one either. Admitted by the Census Address List Improvement Act of 1994, public law.
The response should be aware that not withstanding the provision law, no person shown subject to any penalty for being compliant with collection of information, if it does not, oh, no, that's not it. Would you call, Lean? I wanna confirm that you did call them.
Yes.
And they, they did.
And I, when I spoke to the woman, I actually received two telephone calls.
How long ago did you call them?
I would say about two months ago, and I spoke to them on the phone, and they said it was not mandatory, and they would update our records, and I was surprised to see that coming again.
That's a whole different, Department of Commerce and Economics, we don't have, I mean, I know they were probably looking for zip codes or whatever, but we don't have commerce other than a few businesses in the town inside, so.
We do work with 211 and 911 within the state, so those are our bridges that we update and work with on a regular basis.
I might ask just to make one follow-up phone call.
Yeah.
Just to make sure, let's put it in the bed, and just, before we make any decision on that, we'll make one more follow-up phone call.
I don't think it would help.
No. And let's document who you, on the, who you talked to when.
Yeah, yeah. I have the records of the last call.
Did you want anything off that page, or?
Okay. This was an FYI. You recall last week how you talked about Cohen Steele beating us, either Monday or Tuesday?
Yeah.
Well, Monday was a holiday, and Bob was gonna be the principal, so he called me Monday night saying he couldn't make a visit on his calendar. I showed up one time, early, and no one showed up.
No way at all.
No way.
I've seen some follow-up letters from you, Lean?
Yes.
In reference to Cohen.
So, Chuck came in yesterday morning, and met with Bob.
And how did we get a hold of Chuck to get him in?
I called him on Monday, because I worked Monday.
Okay.
And.
Tuesday, you called Tuesday.
I scheduled, I called, I thought it was, I thought the original date was Monday, and it was a holiday, so nobody showed. So, I called to confirm that he was going to be scheduling sometime, because I didn't see any correspondence from either of them through email. And he said, oh, well, I didn't hear from Cohen, Pete, from Cohen Steele, so I didn't show up. And I picked up, I said, well, can you do tomorrow? If we can work it out? And he said, yes, I'll be there at 9 o'clock. So, he, was it 9:00 or 8:00 o'clock? 8:00 o'clock?
He was at 8:00.
Okay, and when I got in, Pete was not here. I picked up the phone, and he was not really happy. He was being very patient with me, and he, I expressed, you know, that he was extremely frustrated with the company. He was only talking to me because, for other reasons of relationship with the town. And he agreed to come today at 9:00 to meet with Chuck. Out of courtesy, I contacted Pete through his email, asking for that invoice, because I knew it was still outstanding. Pete mentioned it on the phone, that it was a little bit difficult for him to swallow and be cordial when the fact that they haven't received a nickel from them from the order, initial order. So, after I got that arranged for today, I asked, I emailed Pete, asking to forward me the outstanding invoice, so I can forward it to the president in hopes of getting, you know, the job, the invoice paid, so that we can put it behind us and they can finish the job professionally.
Does anyone know how their meeting went out here today?
They didn't, nobody showed up.
They didn't, I think they, Peter didn't come?
Peter or Chuck, and I, 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 I'm the third wheel here, so I don't wanna get. Peter or Chuck, and I, 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 I'm the third wheel here, so I don't wanna get anybody angry. It was arranged for today at nine o'clock, uh, yes, nine o'clock, and nobody showed up.
Oh, and you were here, Bob, for us?
I was here yesterday. And that, well, what may have happened, and I don't know, but I know that I guess Chuck and Pete may have exchanged phone numbers, so that they may have done their communication on the phone, he may have told Chuck, "I'm not coming out when you take the measurements, you do that, and we'll make it fit."
Right, right.
The pieces of steel that are out there are the ones that have to be out there. The other pieces have nothing to do with the pieces that need to be modified, so that's why those are out there. So Peter at Cohen Steel could have that picked up, or, and I don't even know why SCOR isn't trucking it.
I don't know either.
It's a mistake.
Yeah, it would be just as easy, probably quicker for them to do the shop jobs, I know.
That's the whole thing, I think we have to, we don't wanna become in the middle, but we wanna be vigilant of what's going on.
Well, maybe we could let Chuck know at SCOR that, you know, we need to get this out of here, and since it's their era, we believe that their company should be transferring that to Cohen, getting it out of their parking lot.
Yep, yep.
What are your thoughts about that? Again, we're, we're getting in the middle between, not really.
We don't know what they're talking about, back and forth, and they may have already worked that out or not, I'm just saying. As I view it, it should be their responsibility, but I don't know what, I don't even know if they've talked.
Because remember, Cohen Steel is a subcontractor of the contractor, and we shouldn't be, we have a contract with SCOR.
That's why I said we should call SCOR and tell them that stuff's been in our parking lot for three weeks, and we need them to remove it.
Exactly, but not, we, we don't wanna tell them what to do, but just tell them, fix it, get it done. That's what we can do.
Do you want me to call, or do you wanna call?
I'll call if you want, I don't care.
I don't care either, I've talked to Chuck numerous times, so...
Just, just one phone call, just, I think...
Go ahead and call them, and then send us an email when you're ready.
I think that'd be appropriate.
Yep.
Alright, that's the fun part of the, okay. The other thing, we had outstanding of the library, we have the, still waiting on a quote on Linear before we go official with that, of Linear, if you just to make a complaint.
They hadn't responded back yet.
Yep. And you still need, I need you to go to the library at least one time next week, just walk in there and check it out, talk to Mary.
Next week?
Before we go.
I'll go inside your thing.
Tomorrow, tonight. Tomorrow morning, tomorrow morning's open. Nine o'clock, you can stop by.
Okay, what else we got?
I have, I have come in pretty empty here. Okay.
Do you wanna do public comment first?
I am, I think I wanna do public comment. I've got no public comment again.
Well, before you go there.
Okay, before you go there.
Because we have a former, almost former employee of a transfer station.
Okay.
So maybe we can pick his brain and find out what we can do more efficiently, what we don't need to do, or if you don't mind being put on the spot.
Happy to share whatever, I think I need more specific question about something that, there isn't anything in my mind that...
Is there some way we can, you know, I know that we, we all drop everything off at, you know, as we're going in, our recyclables, is there something we could do there to improve things?
Well, the N R A, last I heard from somebody named Bonnie, is that they're planning, I thought, this review and efficiency, well, practices of improvement kind of thing, isn't it?
And that hasn't happened yet?
It hasn't happened yet, and that would be a good thing. A couple of things that have come up, like maybe already been in the loop here, but the idea of having, there are so many residents, and I'll be one of them as somebody who drops stuff off, I would like to drop off aluminum cans, paper, and have it all sorted. And if there were boxes outside, but not where it could be rained on, where people could put some of the primary stuff pre-sorted to save labor inside, if I take all of my sorted stuff and dump it pretty much in one bin, then they have to sort it back out again. That'd just be one small thing.
Didn't they have, they got the four bins up there, whatever, when you come in, didn't they used to have them, so you put glass on one, and you put paper on the other?
Yeah.
That's what they were kind of...
I only go back three months, I don't know anything before June.
Because it used to be kinda labeled up there, and you put cardboard in one, and glass in another.
I think there's only one that says cardboard now, but I think if it were done in a positive way to say, "Please sort your trash to, you know, assist in..."
I think most people actually might try and do that. I know I do, and I drop stuff off there, but...
And that's one thought, it says cardboard. It really should say corrugated cardboard. And I don't know what you're gonna do to educate people to have them understand the difference, but there's a bale or right behind cardboard that's only corrugated cardboard, so as stuff comes across the counter, you have to pick out and go through everything looking for what's not corrugated. Just one little thing, but... Labeling would be a good thing. I think right now, the people that have been there for years and years know which containers they plan to put in this, in the trailer, there's probably a dozen, and then there's all kinds of other spots where things go. But those that have been there a long time know where it all goes, and the younger employees that I work with, some of them kinda learn what's where, but a label on everything would just make things much more easy. Like the main switch to turn on the compactor, and that whole end of, both the little building and the big building. I just took my Sharpie, because I always carry one, a little compactor right above the switch. And there's just a lot of that that could be done, that would be, would help facilitate ease of, you know, training, and have everybody on the same page, and make less mistakes on co-managing things. The, the recycling system we have is much more labor-intensive than any other transfer station that I know of. I've probably made, I, somewhere eight, nine, ten visits to other transfer stations around the state as part of what they call, what we're waiting for to happen in Dunbar, they call it a SWAT visit, which is Solid Waste Advisory Team. And it was just a label that already has a nickname to it, the police using, and so they use that term to, for visits, that they get volunteers from the transfer station, from the N R A community of members, the ones that are more experienced, or maybe have more elaborate or complex organizations, and so they go to help ones that are trying to improve what they, they do, and those are called SWAT visits. And that's what we're waiting for to happen in Dunbar, and I think it's gonna be in the next few weeks, but I haven't heard anything specific.
We followed, Woody made, maybe I send them an email, copy the board on, send them, when will that be? I thought, we asked them to at least arrange that with them.
I believe it's in the works, but I, I'm not sure if it was put off because his vacation, or...
Yeah, but that was, we asked them in, in August for that. But we have to get on their schedule too, so we have to...
And Lean, again, not to do any, get anything negative back, but just state that the selectmen asked you to...
Yep, yep. So I, the fact that Woody is on vacation, I took liberty of going down to observe, to, you know, just walk in and say hi, and he's been managing the department for...
You're, you're coming up to your last day soon, or? Right, Saturday. Okay. And then I'll go to an on-call basis, and I really wanna work that out with Woody. Planning on making up memory and of understanding of what and when I'm available, and what I can do for him, what he's expecting of, and kind of thing.
Can you provide us with a copy too, just so we'll, for aware of it?
Yes.
Because if for some reason he's out, we need to call on-call people, like we do know some of the other people that are on-call, it would help us to understand if we're available to call you too.
Okay.
So if you do that to Lean, that way we'll have it, and...
Yes, I'll get it to Lean.
If he's out sick or away on vacation, we have some other people we'd call on, and it'd be great if we knew when, when you'd be available too.
Okay. One thing that's probably the most important to share with you is, and I've talked with Lean about this, at the, let me see, wait, October, so I guess it was a September meeting of the N R A, which is always the second Wednesday. It came up from the executive director, who deals all day, all week long with all of New England, and has got his fingers on the pulse of the markets and the market changes, and he's, he's a brilliant man. And what he gave us for information was, we've got a little tsunami of problems coming together that are affecting the capacity of solid waste going to landfills and burn plants, because there's one closing in Chickopee, there's one here that somebody, so-and-so is going out of business, and we've got a rising tide of what's coming to New Hampshire, and so the M S W tipping fee, which I don't have to explain, everybody understands what I'm doing, is, is going up, and a month will make a difference. And so Woody, I know, is right on top of that, and that's probably his first priority when he gets back from vacation. But if he says we need to act quickly, do everything you can. I would request and suggest to do, to react as quickly and lock in whatever you can at the best rate, because only time of delay of a few more selectmen's meetings will mean probably a higher price. We were lucky in Lee, and this is maybe two years ago, but we spent six months from start to finish on a thorough evaluation and meetings, and then finally getting an agreement. And your contract ends in another...
December thirty-first?
Yeah, so you've had two...
Two months.
Two months, more or less.
Two months and a week, a couple weeks?
Yeah. And so things have gotta happen quickly on finding out what's available in the marketplace, and because there aren't a whole lot of choices of where we can haul to dump. It certainly isn't a logical thing to go to the landfill, it begins with B, and it's not Berlin, there's a big one up north. It's so far that it just doesn't make any sense to, no matter what the price was, to have a truck and a man taking it all the way up there. So I think you've got Pennacook, there's the place in Bow that we currently do business with. The best thing that happened is that they only go up a little bit, and hopefully they'll give an offer to make it a five-year deal, so that they're locked in for five for the next, I would say for the next five, six, seven, eight years. There's no sign of any backing off, decrease, curve back downward. Even if there were economy changes, I don't think you'd see a, a drop. We certainly were up in about twelve, fifteen years ago, and then it came down, the market in New Hampshire. And now it's gone up a fair bit in the last two years, since the Lamprey, which Lee was part of, signed, I think we tipped, our tipping fee for Lamprey was sixty-one fifty, I think, sixty-one dollars and fifty cents per ton for M S W. And now, I wish I had a better handle on it, but I think you're talking seventies, mid-seventies, and, and don't hold me to that, because I could be way off. Pardon?
I think we're around sixty-seven dollars.
Yeah, I can't imagine it'll be in the sixties.
For the new bin?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, you're gonna be seventies and mid-seventies.
I wanted to ask you one other thing.
Yes.
We truck most of our stuff to those recycle centers now?
We, true glass, metal cans, the M S W goes to Bow.
Did Lee truck it as well, or did they have it hauled by the other people?
We were, we were lucky to have a drive-through building, and storage for, in the building that we operated out of in the, in the drive-through part, for mixed paper, for newspaper, for old corrugated cardboard. We could store a whole trailer load, and we had a loading dock, and so we would ship one whole trailer load, and that would give us the best price. We also had storage containers outside, which is probably something...
That's not really what I was asking. We, we're doing our trucking.
Right.
Do they offer to come and pick up, so we didn't have to offer the trucking? The reason I ask that is because we've had some commercial truck driver issues, and also we're gonna have to replace that truck at some point, so if we don't start a fund to, to get a new truck at some point, we'll be on the backside of that too, so do they offer any of the pickups that you know of?
Well, Lee was part of Lamprey. Lamprey was a ten-town cooperative that was started in the seventies, and five of the towns are part of what the subgroup called the trucking group, and so there's one truck that hauls to those five towns. So Lamprey would haul trash, construction and demolition, and glass. So M S W glass and C and D was all, was hauled. Anything else was usually paid by the person that was buying the material, recyclable materials. We had a container on-site that we dumped our metals into, we had a loader, we would crush it to get a very heavy can, because we paid per haul for it to be taken out. I would rather have Woody here, I'd rather talk with him about it to make sure he doesn't feel like I'm throwing him under the bus, but, and we've never talked, he and I have never talked about this, but I would seriously, as if I, as an advisor, or if I was the transfer station manager, or in a lot of different places, not probably be in favor of replacing the truck. Lee just bought one that was a hundred and twenty thousand for highway department, for sand and all that. With that kind of money and a truck that expensive ought to be working a, I don't know, twenty or thirty-hour work week, or maybe closer to forty. I don't know the number hours ours works per week, but I think it might be six or ten. I really, this is out of thin air, I have no idea. It's just that such an expensive truck, only being used a little bit. But we're between a rock and a hard place too, when I've, I've talked about, gee, if we had a commercial hauler hauling it. Right now, we haul, on Monday, we haul the Saturday trash, on Thursday, we haul the Tuesday, Wednesday trash. We would, we wouldn't have a, if, if we had a private contractor hauling it, we'd have to have in the contract serious penalties if he wasn't there that day. Wouldn't have to say AM or nine o'clock, or seven-thirty in the morning or anything, but we would be in trouble if it wasn't hauled, it was like Thursday, Friday, I can't do it, but I'll get to you Monday. If we've got a full container and Saturday comes, we'd be in trouble, and that's the benefit that Woody has had, because he can control, if he, if he had a truck problem, he'd get it fixed and make sure he'd haul, if not Thursday, Saturday.
Well, if that truck sometimes is not available over the road, it could still be used to move those containers on-site. So if you're not replacing the truck, you can utilize it to move the containers so that you're not in an issue if somebody doesn't show up.
I, I think you're right, though, I think we do have a waiting for discussion, discussion.
Yeah, no, I was just getting a feeler out there, because Woody actually brought it up to us, so...
About replacing the truck.
Yeah, and it's maybe a young truck to be replacing, I thought, so we have to look into that stuff.
Yeah, rather replacing, get a commercial, let me, you know...
So I was really just tapping into your knowledge of what they have done before in other towns, and it looks like they were the mini co-op to do the hauling.
Right. I, the N R A, if you sent them the question, could probably do a little polling, come back with an answer of number of towns that have their own truck versus towns that use contract haulers.
Yeah, that might not be a bad idea right there.
I have no idea.
In fact, identify some of the haulers.
Yeah, so, so, you know, if I know...
Identify the haulers and see...
I know, I know I bought one that was Shaw, I think it was.
Yeah, I was on this, to speak by the school...
Robert Rogers.
Yeah, Robert Rogers, and there was a, a truck similar to what we have, and all I could get was the name, I couldn't get the phone number, but he was going right down, well, if he's in town, then he can be in town once a week or twice a week, and so that's just one more name to add.
Is it Putnam? I think it was Putnam, no?
No, it was Shaw.
It was Law?
Shaw.
Shaw?
S H A W.
Oh, okay.
I've seen, there's one in Northwood, I don't remember the name of it, it's one in Northwood.
But the N R A would be the source, they would at least know who they are.
They would probably be able to identify or dig up some names of contract haulers.
Yeah, N R A, we're getting gun talk.
No, I threw towards you, you weren't listening.
But the initials I have, N R A, what is it?
N R R A.
R R A, okay, good thing, because I didn't...
Okay. Anything else, Bob, that you wanna? I think that we got a good start. Thank you for sharing some of your thoughts.
Thank you.
For your help.
And we will, if we bring it in for discussion, we'll invite you to...
Yeah, you seem to have a lot of knowledge, and we wanna be able to capitalize on that.
Well, happy to share.
Woody said we should be, we should have a good, good, some more, good ideas on the table.
Good, thank you.
Okay, Bob goes on your board. Anything else? Please, okay, come on, bring it.
Public comment was all done?
All done, yeah. Do you have any more comments?
I'm asking, Doc.
You started with a comment, but you didn't get to...
I delayed it.
Lee got it.
Yeah, I'm listening, you know, every week or so I hear about SCOR Construction. What is the issue with SCOR? Alright, in a nutshell. I believe SCOR Construction, they do the, they support rafters for the, for the snow load. The thing is, when Landwood was first built, it meant cold. With the, with the new, with the new slate roof, it doesn't really mean today's cold. So we, an engineer was brought in to design a safe structure. It appears that SCORE Construction, in my opinion, underbid the project. That's just my opinion. But they constructed the steel supports from drawings, not actual measurements onsite. The problem is the steel that they constructed from drawings don't, that's not, they don't all fit.
Right. I'm, I'm already up to speed on all that. Why are they not coming back?
Go ahead, Joe.
I'll give you a little history. Where I'm the third superintendent for this job. The first one that actually worked in the bidding process and, and started the job, ended up leaving. Maybe that's why the bid was kinda screwy, but that's, uh, and that's what it is. So they sent another guy up and I guess he was, uh, if you can remember, Brookley or the boss Brookley of the day? Well, the next guy came in, he lasted a day. He was gone. So now we're down to this new guy that came in. He did come in, uh, Wednesday, yeah, Wednesday. Thinking he was gonna meet Peter here. Peter evidently there, communications crossed or whatever, or he thought we were calling Peter. So I went and talked to Lean. She talked to Peter. They were gonna exchange phone numbers as well as they were gonna meet here, but they may have resolved whatever they were gonna do. I don't know. Cause that, that super wanted to show him, uh, explain to him what needed to be done on each one of those. I don't think Peter's gonna come out here and wait for someone to measure each one and tell him what he needs. So I think that's, that's what's problematic.
What I'm not understanding is, like, so they could potentially throw another super out there and then another super out there. At what point do we say that's enough?
We came to that point mid-summer. We, we were consulting our, our legal advisor, our town attorney for this. We were ready to move out because we didn't hear anything from them. And all of a sudden SCORE showed a little bit of life. So at this point, we're giving them a, a little reasonable, uh, breathing room to finish the project. I think, in my opinion, if the project's not finished by December of this year, I would be very disappointed. And I think the board would be forced to do some action.
I just simply can't understand why.
Cause they were acting in good faith, that we had to see them through till we don't get any response. So.
But at some point, as I said, they could get another super and then another super.
Leo, I'll just put my two cents into it. They were overpaid. In other words, most of the majority of the money for that steel and that installation has been paid to them. We owe them a very small amount. So it befloes us to try and work with them to get them to finish the job as well. Because we're not gonna have the funds to hire another company to do the job right.
Yeah, we'd have to sue.
So, and it wasn't paid by this select group. It was paid prior to us getting this issue. So, we're, we're stuck with their, their problem. And so we don't have the money to hire somebody to finish it and backcharge them or bill somebody else or vice versa. So we're lucky Peter Cohen is willing to work on this steel still, especially not getting paid. So, um, you know, that's what we're trying to work through with SCORE and they finally are responding after a bunch of phone calls from myself and Lean and the rest of the select group. So we're trying to work through it, get it done. And, uh, we're, we're not in a, we're not in the best of positions, I, I wanna say.
I understand that now because as you said, if we didn't hold any money back.
We didn't hold enough back. That's, we didn't hold some, but not enough.
We didn't hold any money back. A thousand isn't much money, you know?
They had requested a payment, Leo, how it came to light. And we all looked at it as a select board and and Lean provided the paperwork of what had been paid prior. And we said, we're not, we're not making the payment. For one thing, there's very little left to pay off. And, uh, they were asking for more than we actually owed them. So we all, it all came to light at that time for us. And that's when we pursued our attorney. And I think the only reason that they're willing to finish this is these jobs are attached to their bonding. So they're part of the Better Business Bureau and they're part of a bonding group. And if they get a, a black eye with this, it might affect their bonding rating.
Right, right.
So I think that's the only thing we have going on our side to tell you the truth on what.
Right, because like you said, a thousand dollars is no enticement.
Right.
No, please, it'd be good five.
Oh, five?
Yeah.
But that belongs to Cohen Steel.
Yeah, but we're, yeah, but they're the ones that ordered the steel.
But they owe Cohen Steel.
Right, we, we owe SCORE.
Somehow in all of this though, when we got billed, you know, we never thought of what percentage they had done. Cause they got, really, they got all of their money.
Right. Well, we went by the contract, we paid by the contract. They, they, you know, installed, they got a deposit. They installed, they woodframed, they ordered the steel, the steel was delivered. And therefore they asked for a third payment, which left the retainer of five thousand, but somehow they didn't track in their bookkeeping that they had gotten the initial deposit, which was substantial.
So anyway, it was, uh.
Cause the steel is the biggest part of that, you know?
So we're working through it and hopefully we can get it resolved by the end of the year. Cause we've been trying to push them to get it going. And they brought it down. Now it's been sitting out there. So then I followed up a week or so ago with a phone call, got ahold of the girl in the office, the new guy. Even before that, they, they asked that, they meet with engineer, they wanted to dumb down the plans and make it easier. And we, we facilitated a meeting between the engineer and SCORE. And that basically, uh, engineer was very adamant about what needed to be done. And he, his signature for liability is on that. And so uh, they wanted a select one. At least I, they inferred that they wanted a select one to make a change. And no, we deferred to the engineer, the professional.
You paid the engineer.
Exactly.
Right. Bottom line is if it fails, there's two people going to court. There's the contractor and the engineer. If the contractor did what he was supposed to do, the engineer drives.
Yeah, right. You go sky for the engineer. It looks like it was over-engineered anyway. So.
That's a possibility, but they allowed them, they allowed them to break every other screw, I think, in as, as part of the.
Yeah, it's, they come in here on each piece of steel for goodness sakes. It looks like there's a lot of holes in there.
Any other questions, sir?
No.
Okay. Don, any other questions?
You guys wanted to see me.
Oh.
Oh, we, we talked with the, uh.
Your, your other trustees agreed to meet next Thursday, according to Brian and Judy, but obviously.
Nobody told me. Last email you said Thursday.
Right, but it was in, in, um, Brian emailed you and Judy and CC'd me on it. So I sued.
She CC'd us.
Okay.
Well, thank you for attending.
Yeah.
But the issue is we, we.
Do we have cake or coffee or anything else?
No, the, the issue is we're gonna talk about the, the rear of the building. We wanna do some, uh, preventative measures to keep the building intact as we go down the. It requires it's adjacent right to the, to the cemetery.
Oh, I know. Wait till he comes for.
Well, we're not gonna share all the details of this. So the trustees are gonna come in. We wanna surprise them. They have the jigsaw what's going on.
Bring your shovel with you.
Okay. Anything else, Don?
No, that's it.
Sorry, I wish we would've told you earlier.
On the general, you see there was a blank spot there. We gotta pick out the.
I, I, I got a little concerned when I saw that.
Okay, hearing no other, uh, court, anything in public? Nope, as a public member? Nope, okay. I'm closing the public comment. Now bring it back to the board. F selectman. Dave, you're first.
I am. I went down to review for the board.
See you tomorrow.
Getting off the main road, it looks much better than I thought down on the other side of it. It's, uh, nice and wide. The only thing that I commented and they're still early in their, in their development, so I paid too much attention to it. There's a lot of bowlers and stuff off the edge of the road that, you know, I think could either be sunk in the ground or cleaned up, but they might be doing that as part of their sloping job. So I don't think at this point it needs to be talked about. The only other thing I saw is down at the end, the turnaround um, was labeled private property. So you get all the way down this big wide road.
Right.
Because we haven't accepted it yet. It's a private turnaround. So I actually went all the way up to the pond to turn around. So I felt almost like it was at Kelsey Road again. You're all the way down there, but you actually can't turn around. So, uh, I've seen them both. Yeah. So I just laughed. I saw them signs of those two chairs and they've been looking a little, looking over the meadow out there.
Oh, boy.
So that was one thing. Um, the next thing is, I wanted to bring this to the board's attention. I've been talking back and forth, going through and following up with the field maintenance on the fog field. They've got a fog field.
Fog, you know, F O G G. Oh, okay. Oh, that's the, uh, the construction, okay.
I was lost. Construction, it's a conservation area. So, um.
It's mowing, right? You're talking about?
Yeah, mowing and or the new guy they have is actually cutting it for hay and is upgrading that field. And, uh, it looks like they just came to the conclusion to, um, add the ash to that field this year, which should help that field, um, regrowth. So it's not just cutting brush and wood down so that the hay actually is gonna be, um, more usable. And that will alleviate them having to use money out of their expenses just to bush hog the field down every year because somebody's gonna be able to use it. Well, in going through this process, they looked at using that wood ash this year. And then they wanted to get into a program that the state has to help, um, farmers maintain property or field that they have leases on to upgrade the land. And because that is under town land and or, um, conservation, the state no longer has programs that opt to that. So they asked me if the select people might think that a lease program on that property, um, would be something that we would entertain.
There is a lengthy conservation document that's in the file.
For that property?
For that property, uh, what's allowed, what's not allowed.
Yeah, which they're aware. They're obviously conservation people. So, and they maintain that property. So my quick response back to them was, uh, just speaking for myself and not, I made sure to make a note of whether speaking for the other select people that, um, it would be nice if they looked at getting into an agreement on purchasing or selling the hay off the property and not so much leasing the land. And that way they might not need to come into the select board or another board because they already have a maintenance agreement because they're doing that maintenance function already as part of the conservation on that property. So if they look at doing that over a time period, and I suggested making it yearly so they can check out.
So it's a source of revenue. Cause they, how they established the initial revenue was to do a substantial timber cut.
And that money is running out.
Well, they've got fourteen grand.
Well, they're spending, um, fourteen hundred and forty dollars at least to put the, the ash on there.
Oh, okay. We haven't seen that bill.
Yeah. So that's, uh, something that they're doing as part of their maintenance group that they've agreed on. So what they're trying to do is eliminate having to spend money out of their budget every year to maintain the field instead of, instead of having somebody get, uh, you know, a crop off the field and and either pay them or do it at no charge so that the maintenance is basically taken care of in those fields.
Self-sustained, self-sustained.
So my suggestion was to try and get into something with an agreement on the crop on the field and not so much leasing the land to anybody. So that was my suggestion to them. And I put it back to their board now, but I wanted to make the other board members aware of it.
As the conservation group?
Yeah. Yep. And, and this group.
Yep.
So just to keep you guys in the loop and, uh, I think that's it. That's a fog field update.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have.
Bob's, uh, Bob's all set. I'm gonna go to the town administrator.
I don't have anything else.
Okay. I'm gonna go to, everything a bit of an answer there?
Yeah.
You keeping up with us? Okay. Okay, I have nothing else for the group for tonight.
Like, are we gonna go back into a non-public or what are we doing there?
I think we can talk about it. We'll go for maybe fifteen minutes.
Okay, in non-public?
Yes.
Okay.
So how do you make a motion? Anything you can make?
I'll make a motion to, uh, to, uh, go into non-public. Yeah, per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three. Two, we will two receive.
And I'll second the motion.
We have to go, uh, individual voting?
Yeah.
Bob?
I, Mark Ellis is yes.
Kaminsky, yes? No, yes. And please hit, hit the camera, please, sir.